Okay, we're going to call the work session to orders. And if we could just get everyone to go around the table and state their names, please.
State your name, board member.
Alicia Haldy, board member.
Andy Halloman, board member.
Barry Davis, board member.
Dina Mitchell, board member.
Dina Bishop, superintendent.
Alisa Snally, board member.
Danny Grant, school board secretary.
Starmer's at school board. And we are going to have, and today's date is June 4, 2018. And this is the work session beginning at 4 o'clock. And we are going to have Shannon, have a member.
The gentleman from Western Demographics, Shannon Bingham, is here just to support questions, if needed, not there isn't a presentation.
Right. So he will be on the phone shortly if we have any other questions. In front of you is the suggested start times, changes that you can take a look at. I know we had a conversation on this in our.
Yeah, I have a.
Oh, you have a, okay, so you have a PowerPoint. Go ahead.
Yeah, so the board president mentioned just a note sheet, so that they're all on one note sheet, but also within the PowerPoint, or they're broken down. The board retreat had quite a bit of dialogue on school start times. And so we, the goal was for this work session to continue to present where we are, what three are the finalists, if you will. The request was then from the board of the administration to come with a recommendation, the first meeting in August, to actually have a vote, the second meeting in August. So this is our president's due diligence and putting it on the table to discuss it again. As a review, the one that is labeled, and this is on our board docs, so that's why we want to reference it for the publics. They were renamed, the start time scenario is current, which would be no change. And then pros and cons, what we did was take just, Shannon Bingham did just a mini, kind of what are the pros and cons, to support the board in its discussion. There's many, many more, but of the data that came through, and whether it was the research, the feedback from our community, or kids, employees, it was really kind of the, the gathering of the most important things, if you will, that came up quite a bit. Then we have, the next after current is the current plus 30 minutes, which was kind of the middle of the road, if you will, knowing that we needed to do something, after the community meetings, it was evident that we need to do something for high schools with this research, and then really seeing the impact on kids and having them share. But at the same time, it was a struggle for our elementary parents to make that change. It was going to impact a lifestyle, whether it was work, we had lots on family time negatives, things like that. And so there's pros and cons for that as well. Each one has positives and negatives, which obviously, if everything had a positive, this thing would be so much easier to make, right, the decision? And then finally, the scheduling time would be new order starting at 8:00. And this is where we actually took the research and did a more significant change. So it's taking, moving it back 30 minutes. No one would start before 8:00, but rather than having high school start at 8:00, it does provide the elementary schools to start at 8:00, then go to high schools, middle schools would be the last. So that was adjusted for high schools in paying attention to sports, as well as their work. That's what came back from the kids, that I'd love to go later, but sometimes too late, I'm going to miss work, I'm going to miss some activities. School activities adjust more, but they were referencing community sports and things. So we took the feedback, it has pros and cons. We've heard the information before, but we wanted to present it in a way that was very simple, reference, so that we could talk about it, and then turn it back over to the board president. This is what we have. We're here to answer questions. We have Shannon Bingham on the phone for your discussion. Thank you, Madam President.
So at this time, I would open it to any questions that the board might have for Shannon Bingham on the phone, so that we don't keep him on the phone for long periods of time. Does anybody have a question that they'd like to ask about his research? Yes.
Shannon, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am, I can hear you just fine.
Did your research, did you look at other states, or not, other school districts at our latitude, you know, our kind of darkness sign, when they start schools, and you know, whether some are starting at 7:30, and things like that?
There really aren't any comparables at our latitude. The European districts that are at our latitude mostly start at 8:00, and all three levels of their schools. This would be in Denmark and elsewhere in Scandinavia, they have a starting band, if you will, of time, between 8:00 and 8:30. As far as the Minnesota tier, they were tending to spend more money on transportation, but several of those districts did put elementary first, and were addressing some of the challenges of elementary school, students walking in the dark mid-winter. The two Colorado districts that are comparables, not from a latitude standpoint, but somewhat from a temperature and climate standpoint, because they're mile high. Cherry Creek started this year with elementary in first starting order, and Littleton School District is starting in August with elementary in first starting order. And in Cherry Creek, the majority of our feedback from the parent community, including our low-income little and high school feeder system to the north, has been constructive. We haven't had insurmountable problems with elementary schools starting first.
And excuse my geography, but is there any Canadian comparables? I don't know.
Unfortunately, there aren't any districts of our size. Yellowknife and Whitehorse are significantly south of us. I did not consult those districts, but I'd be glad to do so if you direct me to. Those would be the two nearest comparables would be Yellowknife and Whitehorse.
Thank you. So what time are those Colorado schools starting?
Can you hear that?
They're starting at 8:00.
So elementary starts at 8:00, and goes first.
And high school starts at what time?
I think Cherry Creek is 8:00 for elementary, 8:20 for high school, and 8:40 for middle school. They have 20-minute tiers, and they have a pretty significant bus driver shortage, unfortunately.
Yes.
Shannon, was your research limited to schools that made a switch, or any district that had an early start time, like some of the proposed models?
I'm doing post-change research, so I'm working with school districts that had early starts, and then moved on to later starts, and had before and after performance and wellness indicators when possible.
But for reference, there are districts that have these, that just had it for a long time, it's been their historical schedule?
There were early adopters that went to later school start times that go back to the late 90s in changing their start times.
Thank you.
I have some sampling of about 12 districts that I've conducted recent interviews with. If the superintendent would see fit, I'd be delighted to give you those interview results, and then I can do further interviews as you suggest.
We would appreciate those interview results, if you want to forward those on.
I'd be delighted to do that.
Anyone else have questions? Okay, I'm going to ask a question. What is the difference in those schools that have later start times? What is the difference in their start times between elementary and high school?
Between elementary and high school, depending upon the tier status, and a lot of these districts don't have the climatological and transportation challenges that we do, but their tier difference ranges from 20 to 30 minutes. So most of the districts, because of high school, after-school activities and employment, have, if they've made a significant change, they've gone to elementary, high school, middle school. And then there's another grouping of districts that spent a significant amount of money on transportation to bundle high school and middle school at the same start time.
Okay. And those areas that you've looked at, or that are using that, what are their demographics as far as low socioeconomic neighborhoods compared to ours?
They vary. In aggregate terms, I probably have four of 12 comparables that are relatively similar to Anchorage, but unfortunately, we are kind of in the bottom two or three districts as far as the groupings that I've recently interviewed from a socioeconomic standpoint. Some of the other districts, such as Cherry Creek and Littleton, in aggregate terms are more affluent districts than Anchorage, but they have one-third of their geographic area that is comparable to our overall demographic. So it's not a terribly clean observation to make, but I would say of the 12 to 15 most recent conversions, that Anchorage is probably in the bottom third from a socioeconomic standpoint.
Thank you. Any other questions? Is there anything else we would want to request from Shannon to be able to make our decision? Yes.
You know, I just was, I just would be curious, Shannon, what your thoughts are in terms of our socioeconomic and demographic issues of being a little different from the other districts? Would that argue more strongly for making this change, or less strongly, or is that something you can't really address?
I think there are two overriding factors. We have a significant number of high school age children and middle school age children that are picking up and supervising elementary school children after school. I think that's probably the leading reason behind retaining a start order of high school, middle school, elementary. Conversely, we have a really confused daylight situation in a lot of sleep-challenged adolescents in our district, which really suggests that we may have a more intense problem than a lot of us realize with high school and middle school age children getting enough sleep, not just mid-winter, but extending into the late spring and early fall, when it's light outside 15 or 17 hours, or 18 hours, or more out of the day, with children being challenged by getting in a dark room and just being able to sleep. Now, obviously, all of that is further challenged by device usage issues. And I think that those two factors kind of argue equally in favor of, from a low-income student aspect, preserving a high school, middle school, elementary school start order, so high school students can help with childcare, but conversely, also arguing for a elementary school, high school, middle school start order, so that our adolescent students are able to get more sleep and realize performance and wellness benefits that are demonstrated by what happens when students get eight hours of sleep a day.
Yeah, and that, we discussed this on Saturday, Shannon, and the reasoning behind the kind of middle of the road was an acknowledgement of the family structure for elementary, and the absolutely need to move it. And that, that's why, because this was not, the current plus 30 minutes was not in the original schedules, that there were six initially. And then as we went through the process with the open houses, this came to fruition, knowing that the childcare issue and the need. And so I think that was a question that came up Saturday, and I didn't articulate it well. It was just to kind of have a win for our entire community, whereas it's not going to be perfect for anyone, but it's going to be better for everyone, hopefully.
I would certainly concur with that. I think if we were to take the scenario where we preserve our existing order and go 30 minutes later, that there would be some benefits associated with that. And I think those would be both student performance and student wellness benefits.
Did we?
Shannon, you mentioned it was kind of a closer spread in start times. We're proposing one of these, a start time elementary school of 9:30. My concern would be kids getting tired by 2:00, and now we're making it even harder. Did any of the, you said 15 most recent changes, have a start time for elementary that late?
We had a variety of six scenarios, and I think one of them had elementary in that later position. But again, there may be an opportunity in the future for us to explore our transportation tiers and see if we could do some compression, but obviously, that would wind up costing money, and that's an issue for us. But I think that when we were looking at the original six, I don't have them in front of me, but I think we had at least two of those where elementary school was in last position. But you're correct, is that some of the observers of that scenario have commented that they thought 9:30 was a late start for elementary school. But in the scheme of things, I think that that one might actually be the best compromise.
But did any of the other districts you studied have elementary starting that late, or around that late?
I don't know, I'd have to have a look and get back to you on that. I'd be delighted to do that.
Does anyone else? Was there any traffic analysis done, as far as more traffic, or that sort of thing, of elementary students walking in the morning?
Anyone who considered the issues of elementary school going later, or staying roughly where it is, were satisfied that that was probably the best possible situation for elementary school students. In the darkest times of the year, I think sunrise is around 10 o'clock, maybe 10:15, but we have twilight before and after. So I think that that 9:30 would certainly be the, from a pedestrian safety standpoint, and from a commuting standpoint, that's one of the quietest times, I think, for vehicles and pedestrians to be on the road. That mid-to-late morning period, based upon the weeks that I've spent in Anchorage, seems to be the quietest time from a traffic standpoint.
Thank you. Anything else for Shannon? All right. Shannon, well, we thank you very much. I'm going to let you go, I think, and again, thank you very much. And if you can share those surveys with us, that would be wonderful. Thank you.
You're most welcome. I'd be delighted to do that through Dr. Bishop, and I look forward to talking with you again.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night.
So does anyone have any questions for Dr. Bishop? Yes.
On the traffic pattern, you can kind of talk just in general, but do you have anything official from the union in analysis?
I don't know about a written analysis. He worked with, I mean, the municipality was, their transportation was right along in this whole part, before all these scenarios were brought forward, but I can find out. I don't think there was a stone left unturned, you know, but I can ask them what they had shared. But they basically said things just adjust according to, because the biggest traffic is school traffic.
Right. So I, oh, sorry.
So to follow up with that, I guess the thing that would be the most pressing issue to ask them is if elementary school did start at 8:00, do they think that, obviously, from the darkness perspective, they're going to be walking in the dark more, but is that, do they think there's going to be significant more traffic on the road at 8:00? Because you said in your experience, it is more traffic around that time of day, right?
Oh, ugly. You know, again, because the district is as large as it is, I think that an amount of that will be somewhat relieved, but we've had so many valley communities and stuff like that, that we can't handle all of it.
But I would think that part of what the elementary school boundaries were drawn around was to keep kids from crossing these streets that they have to walk. So we're looking at more neighborhood traffic probably more than, like arterial traffic.
Yeah, and some of them are major arterial, too. You have Lake O'Neale and some of those requests, but they were built with bridges, but other kids using them, and that's always challenging.
Have you ever seen the news on open lines, ever?
Have we had any safety concerns, I mean, I know there's always a present, but any safety issues from kids walking in darkness now with the current schedule?
Nothing that is significant, other than they're walking in the dark. The majority of our kids really don't walk, so they're bused. They walk to their bus stop, they're not walking all the way to school, and their bus stops are usually in their neighborhoods. That's actually, some schools have total walking, no bus, Wonder Park, for instance, everyone walks, there isn't a bus that pulls up there to have Gen A kids on it, but you know, it's really depend, neighborhood dependent, because, and a lot of parents will drive just one way, that's what makes the bus scheduling difficult, because when you look at an empty bus, they, different days, if I go to Girls, Boys and Girls Club one day, or my mom can go, or dad goes in late that one day, so they take me, they're not exactly set all the time, but we reserve seats on them.
Alisa?
And I don't know if this is a U Penn or maybe a Chippewa thing. We have 45 minutes between each of these. How critical is each of those 45 minutes? Can we compress that path off?
We, and I'll have Chapp, that was one of the biggest things that we tried to do without cost savings. We found that if there was a problem, and you wanted to just have safety-based schools off of this schedule, like certain zones, we could probably do, because it wouldn't be, we would have those leftover buses, but district-wide, it was costly.
Very costly. Anytime you have compression, you're really, in transportation, you're dealing with two things. One is the student count, the other is the time. So when you compress the time, it means that you would have to spread the students out over more buses and more routes. More buses and more routes, obviously, is significant cost for us, because you'd have to spend the money, the capital, which a school bus costs about $130,000, plus then you would have to hire another driver and have them work hours if you compress the time. So some routes can get filled up, you know, so it's not, we wouldn't double our routes, but there would be a significant increase, because it's not a one-for-one. So some routes, you could do it, you could, you know, compress at 30 minutes, and they could run the route in 30 minutes, but others, there's no way you could, and you know, one of the concerns that we hear all the time is the buses aren't full. Well, one of the reasons the bus isn't full is, is that we can't fill the bus in 30 minutes. And so if you compress that time, you make it even tougher to pick up the number of kids, especially in certain areas, the Hillside, Eagle River, Chugiak, where neighborhoods tend to be spread out more, and we're picking up one or two students at this stop, one or two students at this stop. That all takes time to get to those stops to pick up students. And so if you were to compress the timeframe, it would be a significant increase.
If we changed it from high school to 8:00, elementary school to 8:45, and middle school to 9:30, is there a reason in the busing that we couldn't do that?
No, not at all. As long as you have the three-tier system, from a transportation standpoint, cost-wise, there's no difference.
Because that provides our high schools going 30 minutes later, elementary students are only going 15 minutes earlier, and middle school stays the same almost, well, as the second and the third option. So just something to throw out there.
What was it?
It was high school at 8:00, elementary school at 8:45, and middle school at 9:30.
So it's current plus 30 with the last year.
And I do like the middle schoolers coming in to be the last.
And that way, you've got high schoolers coming in 30 minutes later, it gives them that 30 minutes, and on Mondays, they're doing 8:00 now anyway, that makes a big difference, we've heard that. And then elementary is only 15 minutes earlier than what it was.
Yeah, but we're not gaining much for high schoolers at 8:00. It helps.
I mean, we're, if you go with this plus 30, I mean, that would be 8:00 again.
But there are, I mean, we used to hear that the benefits are for middle schoolers, too. So, you know, so just point out of that. If you, if we capture those middle schoolers for those two or three years, wherever they're at, maybe they go off to high school a little bit healthier, and better equipped for academics.
And this also addresses what Shannon had mentioned a few weeks ago, that that after-school time for middle school kids is the most dangerous time, so the later they get home, the less trouble they get into after school.
Well, yeah, we're talking about keeping them on a trajectory, and we get them on a good path in middle school.
Yeah.
It's an option. I think that if the board would like, we can either remove an option and add that option, or.
My understanding is, after this, we were going to just present something to you in an action item, and then you could either adjust it or not. So if that's the action that you'd like us to come forward with, you can think about it for two weeks, you know, or whatever.
How would it work, like, so say, you know, I know we can do ranked choice voting, right? You know, I kind of like this one, but you guys aren't ever going to agree to that one, but maybe we'd all agree on this is my second choice. How will that work procedurally, or getting through the vote?
Well, I, yeah, but I want to go back to you with a recommendation that is solid. It might still have adjustments, as you go through it and learn and get more feedback, but that you can make motions to change it up slightly, but to come with a recommendation that the majority of the board feels confident. And then if you totally don't want that, of course, when you vote, even if you knew the vote was going to go the other way, you could share your, why you were not within that vote, you know.
So even here in our work session, we can say, you know, as a board, our preference might be one over these. I mean, we're always going to have the one, don't change anything, but we might have a preference here, you know, we've got the current plus 30, or the new order starting at 8:00, or even the suggested one that I just made, or there might be somebody has another suggestion. But the direction was, was for administration to bring us what they thought was the best, and then at that time, when we discuss it in non-action items, we can make an amendment that we can vote on, or we can accept that or reject that.
But you're wanting to bring one that we all are kind of.
Cutting in the gist, and then by August, anything can happen, right?
So when will we have the opportunity to?
We're hoping now, talk about it.
Right, yeah, yeah.
Or email, or whatever.
Well, if we want to take more time, we can take more time, because there's nothing magic about the August dates, except we have discussed them, right? I mean, because it's not going to happen until 2020.
Right.
But I have one, your idea is interesting. I would want to talk to, like, a campus like Romeg and West, where there is a lot of, not a lot, but there's some interaction between the middle school and high school, if that is going to be an issue for those schools. And maybe that happens in Eagle River, too, where the schools.
They would like for sharing of courses.
Yeah.
It actually would probably help to where there isn't as big of a rush on the resources at the same time, you'd have morning and afternoon, but they would give enough time to schedule, like, shared math courses or shared English courses. So you'd have, in your master schedule, you wouldn't put those first period, you'd have to put later.
Have there been any complaints about middle schoolers starting 9:30? Have you heard any implications from that?
It really hasn't come up, so.
I feel like kind of middle school's, like, there's been, you know, like, the post-run second, you know, high school and elementary, and I haven't heard as much. Maybe they got enough crisis going on.
One of the things that we talked about is how ninth graders, we talked about freshman year and stuff like that, how if you don't really start that out the right way, you know, it can really kind of set up high school to be a lot more of a challenge. If I look at the high school, elementary, middle school, I see an elementary schooler, you know, doing nicely at 45, getting even more comfortable at 9:30, and having culture shock come freshman year at bumping it up an hour and a half. That'd be my only thing going in that order.
Which one is that, Alisa?
If Star's proposed idea, which would be high school, elementary school, and middle school.
Oh, you're going to jump from 9:30 back to 8:00?
Yeah, jump all the way back to 8:00 a.m., and with all the pressures of high school, and then a new, you know, sleep schedule and everything else, that'd be my only, you know, concern with something like that, is just that first year, and so if we had a way to build in the transition.
I don't know. I really like them not having that after-school time, though.
But the bottom one addresses that, and it's only a 45-minute difference. But the concern is that.
Well, did elementary school people have, it feels like as long as it wasn't before 8:00, they were kind of okay with it?
I would tell you, elementary goes to 9:30, the same thing with jobs and work, because you can leave a middle school kid to walk the bus up a mile a dog. I mean, I'll tell you, they'll be upset at 9:30 start time. I mean, they're not going to be, I mean, they're probably happier that it didn't turn to 8:00, but they're not going to be thrilled about 9:30.
Sure, that creates different problems, yeah.
It just creates a problem.
So maybe, maybe we should reject current plus 30 because of that?
Because the elementary's starting, I'm really uncomfortable with elementary at 9:30, because they're already tired by 2:00, and now you're saying, I am really.
So go with Star's suggestion.
Or, as a third option, maybe?
Like, if you want to say, you just modify, you could just say, Dina, come back to us with elementary at 8:45 and middle school at 9:30. We'd rather see that one than this one. I mean, just simply.
But you're right, Alisa, that is a big change, when they go to high school. But you're right, Lisa, that is a big change if they go to high school.
But then I gotta take, and I gotta break it out, and I gotta, how many elementary schools are we going to affect? You know, an awful lot. How many middle school students? And those eighth graders that are gonna shift to ninth grade, you know, every year, they'll have their culture shock, but they'll get through it.
Right.
How many high schools are we going to affect by giving them the half-hour bump? And so how many kids do we have the potential to reach? How many kids are gonna struggle? How many parents are gonna be happy or piss off?
Well, I mean, it's, there's, there's... Parents are gonna be unhappy no matter what.
I mean, our motivation in doing this is to capture academic gains for children who are struggling.
And health gains.
And health, and absolutely, and I think we underplay the significance of our sleep and light issues in Alaska. I think you mentioned it, they're intense, and I don't think we need to buy the de-study, we need like a sleep thing. But, you know, I don't, I don't think we fully appreciate...
I think it's a result of Texas too, so, you know.
So I, if we, I would like to do something meaningful, I guess is my point. I, what we do, I would like it to be unofficial in a noticeable way.
So your recommendation?
I'm solidly on the, I mean, my preference is for elementary, high school, middle school because of, I mean, the research supports elementary kids. I don't like writing early, but little kids in general do better earlier.
So you like the new order starting at eight, the third option? Yeah.
With elementary first.
I, I think that's really research-based.
So what about the current plus thirty?
If the reason we're doing this is because the research says that high school and middle school kids need, their circadian clock is set so that they don't really, they're not really ready to go to bed until eleven at night, then I think that that doesn't do enough for them.
And that elementary nine thirty is a big concern.
The other part that concerns me is this will cause disruption for a lot of people. If we move it a little bit, I think we leave ourselves open to the fact that we're gonna come back in a year or two and move it again. People will make an adjustment, but it may be major. I worry about, say, middle school parents that are dropping their kids off that have stretched their work schedule to the point they can do that. If we bump that forty-five minutes, suddenly that's, that may be off the table. Of course, they could put their kids on a bus. But I, I do think that we should do whatever we do in a fairly definitive way and not create the possibility that we may do this for a couple of years and then we may come back and change it another thirty minutes.
Yes.
Although it gets a little tricky because when you're looking at middle school and high school, you're now talking about a completely different group of people, except for the people that want their kids. It's just tough, but I think that people know the system, they find a way to make their lives work, and the number of times we change it, I think puts a lot of stress on people.
I don't know about other board members, but I have no desire to change it a little now and then change it again in two years. I think, change it to where it makes sense to change it to, and we're done.
Why would you, why would you think it would change again? Because I know some school districts that have just moved it a little bit, and that's why we studied some of them. And then it was the middle of the road, and they just kept it there. But why would it change again?
I, I just think...
Like, which way? Back or forward again?
I'm thinking we change it a little bit with the idea that we might change it more. Or we change it a little bit and come back to the idea, well, we didn't quite make a dramatic change. I think if we're gonna be dramatic, we need to do it in a felt loop.
Do you think it'd have to be dramatic?
But also not make such a trivial change that it doesn't really get us a lot of benefit, but it still does have the impact of having everybody have to, changing your arrival time for five thirty minutes is a real big deal for a lot of people. So, but I don't know if it really gets us a lot of difference in performance.
So which one would you argue for?
I'm not, I have a quick go.
Okay.
So I'm gonna play the devil's advocate a little bit and just say, yes, I want to do what's ever best for our children academically, and that's, as a board, what we should do, but I can't help but listen to the community and the parents that express to us their concern in ours, the fact that we have a low socioeconomic class, fifty percent of our students, and that this could be and will be probably quite a bit of a hardship on them. And so I have to take that into consideration. I also have to take into consideration if we do elementary school at eight o'clock, they're gonna be, if they're walking, they're probably gonna be on the road walking about seven thirty, seven forty-five, which is the most traffic. So that worries me too. So it's not that I don't disagree with the physiological evidence that says high schoolers need to start later. I just don't know that it has to be so drastic. I know there's benefit that we have high schools start at eight o'clock now, that they're, and a lot of those students are coming anyway because the bus system, they still have to come. But I know even thirty minutes made a huge difference for my son, just getting him up in the morning. So that's, that's just my concerns and my thoughts.
And I, I, the effect on parents is huge in the community, and I think Andy's point of saying, if we're going to make a change, it better be worth what we're asking people to do. So not doing something is, of course, an option as well. I'll say from experience, I'm on the road with my little ones to school. We start at eight fifteen is the final bell, so I see the traffic patterns in my neighborhood. It's nothing easy to me, you know, I, I mean, I can't say I'm some, you know, traffic analyst, but nothing concerning, I guess, on that end. Whenever you drop your kids off at school, there's a lot of traffic.
Right.
So that part of traffic is always there. But, I can't remember the other targets, anyway.
But I'm also thinking the east side.
Oh, the other part. You know what we didn't hear from? We didn't hear from parents of the kids who were trying to target. That was my big concern. In the, in the surveys we had, and we said, come to the middle schools or high schools, and then the, it was that one, not the phone surveys, but there was another survey out there. We didn't, you know, when he said like the demographics, do your kids ride to bus? It was pretty much parents who were driving their kids. I mean, Dean and I were talking about it when he presented it. It wasn't capturing the kids that, a huge segment of our population. So I'm not saying I discount what we've heard from parents, but it is not the full picture.
So if I were to go down these three scenarios, I look at the start, the current one, and the cons, to me, are both the same thing. They're both rooted in the same thing, and so that makes to me only one con against three pros. The current plus thirty, the one con that I really don't like is the nine thirty start time for elementary. That will affect a lot of parents. But the order, I still like the order. I have a very difficult time with the new, the current plus thirty, but rearranging it because the two cons on there that I don't like is the seventy-five-minute reduction in afternoon activities. That's a big deal. That affects a lot of kids. And then the latchkey concern is for elementary students. So I, that, that's another really big one to me because it's a lot of kids that that would affect. And so to me, that one, I just, I can't even, you know, put my head around that one right now. No matter which one, it's gonna affect, you know, a lot of people, so I'm, it's still, it's, yeah, 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 yeah.
Yeah, it's not, it's not gonna be an easy decision by any means for any of us, but I do appreciate the conversation, and it does give us an opportunity to share with each other, you know, our thoughts and ideas, and we will have the opportunity, August first, to have this on the non-action agenda so that we can have testimony, hopefully, and get some parents, individuals in here, and it gives us more time, maybe to get a little bit more information if we need it. But I'd still like to keep it on the August first action items.
Are you able to bring an action item, like you feel after talking to us?
Okay. Any other discussion on early start times? Okay, I think we're ready to move on to the next topic.
I'm gonna request that Jim, the co, or can you, your counterpart, Andy?
He's on leave.
He's on leave, he's fishing sometimes. Okay, so it's just Jim and I. Come on, Jim. So this is actually good for us, so we're gonna work through Madam President, Senate Bill 142, which provided the additional funding. And the purpose for the work session is to get feedback from the board, and we hope to come with a plan. We have a place setter and of where to allocate the funds. And I want the board to know that we could choose to just put it in unallocated, which is exactly what happened last year. You know, when we didn't know what money was coming because of the end of June, and we just updated the board in August, so then the board, you know, so it's not as though all will be lost. But if, if there was an idea of where the board would like to put resources, we could start that ball rolling, and if it was to hire people, you know, that's where you're going, that would benefit us. But it's, it's not a do or die, the money's not gonna go away. It's, it's going to sit in unallocated. That's where it stays right now. Unless the board makes a change at this meeting, and if you do make a change to place it somewhere, then we can place it in that category, notified with your guidance, notified, schools, departments, whatever, whatever you choose. So we're just gonna bring the board through and then turn it over for discussion. Is that all right?
And before we do that, I just want to state that each of you have a letter in front of you from the Principals Association, and this is their recommendation, so I just want you to know that you have that when you're discussing, but.
All right, so the purpose is to discuss possible options for the allocation of the new state funding, and we'll share what that is. We wanted to refocus what the board's priorities was when we did the original budget. And there were different categories, five different areas for the school priorities, and we used little pictures to determine that. So always put students first, that's what the board made a commitment there. We worked to reduce classroom sizes. It was to, to keep the cuts, any cuts that we needed to make up the thirteen million that we were in deficit starting the year, with keep class sizes, keep the cuts as far away from classrooms as possible. Can I finish?
Sure.
Yeah. So quality course offerings and reduced class sizes are coupled. At elementary school, because I'm a teacher and I have my group of kids, if I have more teachers, my group of kids is smaller, that's class size. But course offerings is also a high priority. That also has to do with reducing teachers. Because if you reduce secondary teachers, you're reducing options in your school for additional English classes, additional math, additional art, whatever it would be, you would, you would, your choices may narrow or may not, but teachers do the business of teaching. And so if I remove teachers, these course offerings would be directly. Classroom size would as well, but course offerings is also a component for which our community commented that they had high priorities. Safe and secure clean schools, it's put coupled together because that's how the question was asked. And we'll be sure on the next survey to separate those. The connectedness survey separated them, and we'll do that on our budget survey as well. And then, of course, the destination twenty-twenty goals. You have set out outcomes that you'd like, and so obviously, resources are put to those outcomes. So with that, was there a question now?
I just wanted to, you know, when, when somebody looks at this, they might think that one of our goals is making, you know, trying to fill that thirteen million dollar budget gap was to reduce classroom sizes, and I want to make sure people just realize that it isn't really reducing classroom sizes at this point in time. Hopefully, at some point in the future, it will be. Right now, it's trying to keep class sizes from increasing, right?
We actually, so this is the school board priorities prior to, and it was, it was to reduce classroom sizes where we could. So that was the original, you know.
That was the other one that we were able to do.
Yeah, right. But in, in the budget, we wanted to put it towards the classroom as much as possible. So we did, knowing that we had to cut, we cut from people outside the classrooms to reduce the classroom sizes, yeah. So Senate Bill 142 just gears us back up. Jim will take over on the next slide, but on this one is just a review of where the money is originating. It's new state funding of the twenty million statewide. ASD has about 5.7. When you take in the statutes for funding of charter schools and how that all works locally as well as statewide, it leaves 5.4 available. There also in the same bill was three million for preschools and FY nineteen, three million FY twenty, which is a million-dollar increase. They are yet to kind of work those details out. ASD does have approximately twenty-five percent of all preschool funding now in the state. FY nineteen reductions, this was not everything reduced. This was the primary things that came up in testimony. Lots of efficiencies were made, support outside the classroom, but the big things, we did a lot of cuts in supply amounts and this and that. But of the people that were doing the work, these were primary reductions made during the year. And if you see the top, it's that twenty-five FTE, teachers at middle school and high school. So we did try to hold harmless other than enrollment for elementary. Proposed requests from school board, community, and/or employees. So this last column was after we had the FY nineteen budget passed from the board to the assembly with those reductions in it. Since that moment, and actually even prior to that moment, all of the things in the right column came up often in board meetings. So there were other things as well. However, the most occurred, the mode, would that be the mode of things?
The, right.
Yes, the mode, the most, the biggest, the ones that occurred the most, which would be the mode in that, is, were these. And there's, there's more, so it doesn't mean you have to stick to this. We just wanted to provide as much of a backdrop as we could in going back and listening to testimony. And then when these items came up, what I asked Jim to do is to not say what they were, but give a mind's eye of the cost. So then I'm gonna turn it over to Jim.
Okay. So if you look at this chart, trying to, to give a clean breakdown of the different barrels that you're gonna see on the next slide. And as you look at it, almost everything that's been brought up is, is all valid as a need. But, but naturally, with about five and a half million, we're somewhat limited in even pretending we can meet all these. So under the one-time expenditures, those are going to be more costly of the one-time expenditures. Obviously, there's, there's very small things that can be looked at. Under open contract negotiations, I put the FTE from each of those four bargaining groups because it, it has been discussed that if money were available, that, that might be something that, that we could look at. And then on the third column, I just wanted to give everyone an idea, I'll do the math here, and, and/or over the next couple of days to get final amounts, but that's pretty much what each of those individuals cost the district for one school year. And that includes benefits, so we, we know that average salaries are not what's being shown. And then finally, unallocated. Unallocated can cover everything from, or it can be, it can be placed there because what if we have lower enrollment yet again than what we projected? That's a good place to put money like that because then it gives you some flexibility to react during the month of September, and, and obviously, emerging needs. New, new priorities, new programs, things that come up over the summer as many of the board members and district leaders are going around for different conferences and come back with something that really has worked. Statistically, it's worked, and the science behind it is valid. Unallocated is certainly a good place for that. So if you go to the, the last slide, these are our barrels. And it's really those four categories, and as we discuss over the next half hour or so, if there's something specific that, that the board members want, we'll do a quick tally of roughly how much it costs. And then as we get into the actual board meeting and we get to the budget memo that's in there, the, if, if the board wants to vote on some of these, and bring them up as amendments to the budget memo, then it's really just an amendment to the unallocated. Because right now, for the memo, I put everything unallocated because really, we haven't had a chance to have this discussion. So I'll turn this over to President at this time.
I can start off.
And, and just as a note, if the, the benefit to not having, leaving it unallocated, that the board does want personnel, it does benefit schools to have personnel earlier rather than later, like to hire now than in August, and that's just the last.
Go ahead. So do you, do we, I know last year we were optimistic about how many students we would lose, and we lost a lot more than we anticipated. Do we have any sense of what we might be looking at this fall?
We, we did. We read another numbers crunch using PFD data. We ran another, um, numbers crunch using PFD data and, um, the, the housing data and a number of other, other things. And really, we came back with, um, it, it might be a little bit worse. But, but what's really hard to tell is we don't have the data on the number of children. We have the data on the real estate that still stayed relatively vacant, but it's not much more vacant than it was a year ago. It's just really still vacant. Um, when we looked at the PFD data, it, it is pretty much dead on. But 425 just redeployed from Afghanistan, and you're gonna potentially have a couple thousand people moving, um, over the next six months. And of course, a couple thousand people coming in. So we, we really have these, these vacuums. I talked to, uh, uh, the Department of Labor down, at the office downtown, and we're currently trying to run some simulations to, they have different sets of data that Northern Economics had, and we're, we're trying to run some simulations, um, to see if we can account for some of the variables by the age of the individuals statistically, how likely are they to have a child and at what age, and see if we can dig a little bit deeper. Um, I think, uh, Member Marsette has brought up several times that, that, uh, there's not a housing shortage in Anchorage, but it doesn't appear to have gotten worse than it was last year. It's just still really bad. So.
So what I can update you on that is I just looked at the statistics this morning even. Um, normally, this is when inventory rises, but we're about 300 or more houses on the market than usual. And what we see is sales decline a little bit in June and July because everybody goes out of town or fishes or whatever. So we're kind of right on the same mark there, but I am seeing more inventory, which to me means people might be leaving.
And it could very well be, especially at Department of Labor, their data is three to six months old by the time they collect it and validate it and then put it into their database.
This is current as of this morning.
And, um, when, when we do this, the part of Northwest North Economics is to use the mean of five years. And so we have a really bad year with some other years that were just about 200. And so we're gonna, next year, we're gonna shorten up the number of years to go back to actually have a more realistic, kinda like how, um, when the oil was really selling, sometimes our PFD was kinda low, and you're like, why is it? But it's cause of the mean. Now it's starting to, oil's low and the PFD grew. So it just has to catch up.
Cause I think I told you guys, I thought our numbers were gonna be a lot larger. I, I wasn't sure it'd be that large, but I think it's gonna be larger.
Certainly, when we, when we were talking, they were thinking that it could easily be an extra hundred less kids, but they weren't, they weren't even guessing like 700 less kids. That, that didn't seem to be in there. Um, and these are guesses, right? Because they didn't have the data on each house that's vacant. Uh, so they think it might be a little higher than what we forecasted at 216, but not like, maybe not like this past year.
No, I don't think it'll be like past year, but it will be higher.
They don't see us falling off the cliff.
So just a follow-up. So then it would behoove us to have some money set aside for that reduction, but if we have overestimated that reduction, then we've missed the opportunity to hire some good teachers this summer. So that's the balance we have to strike, right?
Well, if it's around, uh, if it's around 100 students, that's equivalent to roughly, depending on what types of students and IP's, roughly about $10,000 per student, so it's about a million dollars.
That's 10 teachers.
It is, yes ma'am.
Um, I was wondering on the upgrade analog cameras, you know, I don't know a lot about, is that something that's contingent? We talked about having the tie-in to the APD at some point, maybe? Is that a contingent element of that?
Well, APD certainly could not tie into these cameras. These are low resolution, um, analog cameras, much like what is at the education center here. Um, and to give you the, the perfect example, we actually had on film someone breaking into a car at the ed center this year and stole it. And all you could tell is it was two humanoid people, and that was the best that you could tell.
So in our, uh, we're, uh, pulling together previous bond monies of upwards of about $3 million to continue to upgrade the cameras on certain things or keyless locks. So we're kinda concerned with safety. But analog to digital, they are tied into the digital, so it's not necessarily holding up. But most of the analogs are elementary school, older, like elementary schools. The newer schools have the, the digital. But, um, yeah, I mean, it, it, they couldn't tie into analog, but that, you know, so it is, it is for safety and security, but, um, it, it's put on there to bring us up to snuff. Again, the governor is talking about what they could do capital-wise, and we might be able to tap into that through this gap in apples.
Potential other.
Yeah, to, to let you know, we're.
To include the Muni. The Muni could very well fund this because it's capital and that's outside the general fund. And I believe that maybe not the newest assembly members, but, but certainly Dick Trini was championing the, looking at capital. So, uh, this might very well be a good discussion if they join the Muni.
We're gonna bring that up.
Yes. We have a list, but Jim was kind enough to prepare possible things the Muni could take over costs from us.
And that will include, uh, for the finance committee meetings, student nutrition as well.
So my question is, not only the, the 5.5, but do we use part of our, um, fund balance to do some of these things?
I don't understand the question.
Because we don't have that much money, and we have to allocate money towards negotiations. Um, and when you do that, there's not much, I mean, there's not much money to begin with. And there are things that we'd like to do. Do we want to dip into the fund balance to be able to do some of these other things? And I think that's something we have to discuss at this time too.
And that can actually also be separate from the memo that's gonna come before the board at the board meeting tonight, because this one was very specific about the SB 142 impacts. Um, but certainly, the board has that option throughout the year.
But we already have $4 million in the budget.
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
That's what I was gonna ask. We already have some money in the budget in, for contract negotiations, right?
All time for contract.
Not for contract negotiations, the soft and teacher cuts.
Oh, that.
To not ever use more.
In years past, there was a negotiations account, but in order to not cut as many teachers next year as we had to for this year, we had to eliminate that and have maximum number of personnel, um, at the schools.
Uh, I'm just wondering on the secondary reading of math curriculum, intervention training, what that might entail?
Um, I would have to ask.
Me and Jim, okay.
Uh, Ginny?
What is it? What was the question? Uh, secondary reading of math curriculum intervention and training?
Is that a, is that a remedial?
It's, Ginny, can you to, uh, first to read this list? I'll, I will, I'll defer.
Welcome, ladies. Hi. Can you repeat the question?
I was just wondering what it was.
Okay, so, um, so that's a part of our multi-tiered system of support structure. So those would be materials that, um, like on Saturday, when we were, we're looking at those triangles with the green, the yellow, and the red, those would be the materials that we would teach our students in those yellow and red, um, sections of our MTSS structure. So tier two and tier three curricular items.
So would it be new teacher, would it be hiring somebody or would it be buying curriculum?
Um, it would be actually buying the materials that teachers need and then also paying for the professional development so they understand it.
And some of it supplementing things that we've already, we're already doing in classes, that you need those licenses every year and those consumables. And some of them, it was part of that math stuff we talked about on, on Saturday, where we're realigning those entry and exits for math and having that pathway, it's getting the materials for the teachers to be able to teach those classes.
And was that just my, did you say MTSS is a nice level? It was just my no pay now?
And for all of these, we're looking at now, like, where is it that, as a moving in the future, we could, presently, we're recapturing unallocated monies from each individual school in curriculum to see if we could couple it together to get a better deal to pay back out. So it's money that's already at schools to work with them this year. So, um, but that was one of the requests that came that we didn't meet in the budget. So that was in the original budget that we did not allocate direct funds to for the FY19 budget. But it still is a need and remains, so we're just trying to figure out other ways to get.
And is there a budget number to put with it, or is it the kinda thing that the more we have, the more you guys could buy?
It was about a half million.
It's about a half million.
To pay for the training and.
Okay, we got the numbers on this page.
Yeah. Any other questions?
So, um, so what is our objective, um, I guess at this?
Our objective is to identify where we wanna spend the dollars.
So at the meeting tonight, we will say whether it's going into unallocated funds or directed toward?
For instance, you can say, we definitely want this, and then the rest in unallocated. Right now, it sits in unallocated. The decision tonight would help is that if the board desired any additional hiring, that we could get on that.
That's what Dave, that you pushed for, didn't you ask for that, look at?
Well, I, right now, to, to go through my personal position, I'd like to restore the 25, uh, teachers we cut to make the budget balance. That's still gonna have a, a teacher reduction based on the projected decline in enrollment, but at least it would hold us harmless on classroom size reduction. Um, I'd like to see some additional counselors, um, spread out, you know, cover our middle schools, all our middle schools, and maybe have some additional, you know, some something available for some of the elementary schools that don't have anything. And maybe even a couple of custodians that could be used in some sort of, uh, custodial emergency team. Cut 18 custodians. I'd like to see a couple more of them come back as some sort of emergency team to deal with crises in any schools because that was one of the public's top priorities was cleanliness and, and safety in the schools. Um, I'd like to see some money used for the negotiations contingent, for, to give our team leeway to negotiate. And, um, then, and I think in that mix, in the 5.5, we can still have some money for a contingency for reduced population for the children. So that's just my, my personal list.
It sounds like what you went through was like 15 million.
Pardon?
It feels like what you went through was just like 15 million.
No, no, it's actually more like about, about 5.5.
I guess, Dave, one of the things is, what I just heard you say is you wanna put all of that towards recurring costs. You wanna put one-time money towards all recurring costs, is what I just heard.
But it's, I understand your point, but I don't think it's one-time money because we know that there's money coming next year. It was a two-year budget deal. It was a two-year package.
We are hoping they'll, they'll.
We are hoping. And so if that does not come through, knowing that we have an election year this year and everything is all subject to change.
Right, but there is, the point of early funding in education was to give us the ability to plan. And if we restored the 25 teaching positions, which is by far the biggest component of all this, um, all we're doing is just not doing any harm. And we would still, if, if we had a major shortfall for next year, which is, shouldn't be anticipated since they funded us for two years, um, then we could go back and do what we had to do this year, do the, do a reduction.
I, just so we don't get ourselves off track, I, I think, uh, probably good to remember that because we're in active negotiations, we probably shouldn't be too detailed at this forum as we're talking about dollar amounts and negotiations and specifics. Maybe the exec session would be a better venue.
Sure. So we do have an estimate.
We do have an estimate, um, that, uh, we've looked forward into the future at 117, um, with present, without additional teachers. And, and Jim, we, we, we've looked at the structural deficit moving forward, so, um, and I don't know if that was including the 25 that, putting back in or without, but there has been a look into next year with the 117. I'm not sure what it is.
It's without putting the 25, but roughly, we'll get about, um, an additional $10 million a year, a little bit more when you count state and local, once, uh, once they reapprove the $30 million. But of course, that's also a one-time thing. Um, so I suspect this fall, as we're all going around and talking to legislators, that, that really, having something that's solid in the formula, um, I, I think would give everyone that multi-year comfort factor we're looking for.
And what was it, what do you foresee? That's the revenue increase, what would be the, the cost to a business? How much does that increase?
13 to 15 million dollars. Um, obviously, if we add 25 teachers back, it pushes it closer to the 15-plus million dollars and over. Um, and that's assuming a 13 to 70% softer increase.
Dana, Dana, Dana. Then you then enter.
Uh, and I don't know if you just answered this, but I'm not sure. I like the 25 people who, I mean, that addresses lower class sizes, it sounds good. What I don't wanna do is get in a position where we lay off those people a year later. How do you see maybe in general terms, the odds of that happening based on attrition or things like that? I don't wanna do a multi-year recurrent thing for 5 million.
So, um, we didn't lay off technically like teachers, but we reduced class size because we had 250, and they're still coming in, uh, people who retired.
You meant we increased classes.
We increased, right, sorry. We increased class sizes, lowered the number of teachers we have, so we reduced teachers. Right, so we didn't technically, we didn't have a layoff at the end of the year for positions that we actually had classes for. Now, if someone had, uh, a certification, I'd have to check the tab, somebody had a certification that there wasn't a course for to teach, that may have happened, but generally, we didn't do like a blanket because we're short of positions. So, um, but if, I mean, you can foresee, if the increase in revenue is 10 million, but the increase in cost is 12 at the lowest end that he said, there's still a gap, and that was based off of the budget for FY19. So you use the assumptions of this many employees, this many, if we put the 25 back in, but, but then again, we could use a fund balance, that's without fund balance. You know, there's, there's other indicators that you can move that lever to where you wanna put your priorities, but 117 won't cover. It would need to be about 150, I think, or.
Really, if we don't get in the 140 to 150, we're, we're not gonna feel comfortable as we come into a budget. Those discussions about we should budget for what we need versus what we get, don't, they don't work that way in the state. We really need a BSA between 140 and 150 to be able to budget. And that's really budgeting minimal, not huge, huge growth. That's really minimal, is in that 140 range.
And Madam President, my point wasn't to, to bring up to stop the discussion. We can do whatever we want. I just want people to have eyes wide open that 117 is not going to meet next year's needs, and that, that's a given. Uh, but that shouldn't preclude like the decisions you wanna make today or for the kids today, right? So, um, just to share that.
So Dana, I could.
So I just wanna make sure that we, when we talk about a little more than 10 million next year, we need to remember that is not on top of the 5.5 million. The 5.5 million was this year, it is going away next year. So it's, it's not like we're, we've got the 5.5 million, we can keep going forward with that, and we've got 10 million next year. So really, it's only like a 4.5 million increase versus this year. And I don't mean to muddy it, but it's, I, I think that's something we're thinking.
They're two separate.
They're two separate years.
Right, right.
But I understand exactly what you, the way you're thinking at it.
It's, so we can't think, well, then next year, we'll have 10 million more because we'll not have.
We'll have 5 million more than we'll have of the 5 million more next year.
Right. But I completely agree with Dave that we should do, I mean, I'm, I'm so sensitive to your issue, but we have to just start, and, and the legislators are expecting us to bring back teachers. I think we need to do what's best for the kids now and just go back down and lobby like heck next year to, to keep what we've got.
And the, the discussion about one-time money being used for one-time things has gone on for a long time. It was a mantra. Um, and I get where white just like you're coming from to some degree, but the reality is with the uncertainty we face, it, it really is all one-time money. If oil goes back to $30 a barrel for a while, we're, a whole bunch of the money we think of as recurring at the moment is not gonna be. And if it goes up dramatically, then everything changes. I, I think it's critical for us to be able to go to the white just like you and say, we took every penny you gave us and applied it in the ways that we thought would do the very best that we could do for the kids we have this year. And, and we're gonna be faced with that again next year of making the best decision for the kids we will have next year. And within 5 or 10 million dollars, there's a lot of latitude to adjust FTE. A lot of people, I think, walk into the idea that we're hiring and laying off these same 10 or 12 teachers over and over and over. And within 5 or 10 million dollars, there's a lot of latitude to adjust FTE. A lot of people, I think, walk into the idea that we're hiring and laying off these same 10 or 12 teachers over and over and over again. It's never been like that, even at times, and I've heard assembly people say this out loud, you're just laying off and then rehiring the same people again, and that's not what happens. But we have the ability to adjust if this turns out to be one-time money. The adjustments will be painful, but, but I don't think that would justify finding a one-time use for funds that wasn't the best thing to spend upon kids this year. If there is a one-time expense like that, then yeah, it ought to, it ought to be at the top of the consideration. But the reality is staffing is past critical and, and it may get worse. But we shouldn't make it worse sooner in anticipation of, of issues that are occurring. As we get an annual budget, we have to do our annual best.
So, I just want to, I want to pitch something, the school volunteer coordinator. Because I think this is a program we've not had before, and I think it would be very viable, and it would cost us 30, 50,000 maybe. And basically, it's a coordinator that would reach out to the community and match up volunteers with the needs of the schools. Because we're, you know, teachers are having to do so much more now. If we had volunteers that committed to every Tuesday from 9 to 12, they can count on that. They can have them do lunchroom, they can have them make coffees. They can do so many things that a teacher now won't have to go and do. And I think, I've talked to a lot of teachers and, and principals, and they all agree that it would be very helpful. And we have so many people in the community that really would like to volunteer in the schools and don't have an avenue to match up to the school if they don't have a student in the school. So, that's something I'd like to advocate for. And then I do think the secondary reading and math curriculum training would be a good thing. I would like to see the return of the teachers, but I'd also like to see counselors. We have one counselor for 750 elementary students, and we have 23 schools without counselors. And we have a lot of kids that come to school with a lot of, of issues. So, that's, that's mine.
Dave?
I, I just want to say, I actually had on my list, too, the volunteer coordinator. But I didn't know a dollar amount, so I didn't speak up about it.
I think at, at $50,000, it would certainly be a part-time position and not.
We're, we're looking at a couple of that.
So, we'll, we'll look into this.
Okay.
We have some liaison.
So, maybe we have about 15 minutes. Maybe if we just go around the room and everybody kind of state what their priority is, I think that would help. And, Alyssa, I'm going to start with you.
How do you want it framed? I mean, what, are you talking like this on this list? Or do you want percentages of buckets? Or what do you need?
The more vague it is, the better the percentage in the barrels is. If you don't know specifically what you want, then maybe just overall percentages, like roughly how much, 20% maybe stay in unallocated or something like that. But it can be a combination.
But then are we getting our priorities?
Right, but you could say, "I want to keep 20% of the funds in unallocated for contingency." And that I want, the first priority is 25 teachers, and I want counselors, and I want this. But there's a lot listed.
Right.
And I would say it's overspent, so we'll have to narrow it down.
Right, right.
40, 40, 20.
So, did everybody hear what, Alyssa, want to share that again?
40% in one-time, 40% in class size reduction, and 20% in unallocated.
I just, can I say it one more time?
To, I mean, 40% in one-time expenses, 40% in class size reduction, and 20% in unallocated. And after that, I'll let them decide what they want that to look like, because I don't want to. My command.
What are the one-time expenses?
That is the first column of the previous chart.
So, Dave, have you, you, you want to express yours again?
Yeah, I mean, the percentage going into these buckets on this graphic depends on the, the cost. Jim, I, I've got 5.5 million would restore the 25 FTE. And I just want to follow up on Andy's point. Yeah, it is confusing, but, and to reinforce Andy's point about we're not the same people, there's about 250 folks retire or move, or, or teachers that, that, that change over. So, the, the district's recruiting new folks every year, or hiring new folks every year, even if we weren't reducing teachers or increasing teachers because of that turnover, right? So, that plays into what you, your point earlier. These aren't the same folks that are laying off and hiring back because of that. But, so, what would be the percentage in the class size reduction, Jim, if we were to just keep the same level of class size as we had last year? Would it be about, I'm thinking it's, it's going to be about 40, 45%, something like that?
45.4.
It's 45.5.
So, I was off by half a percent. Personnel. Okay, so looking at two, two counselors, two custodians, and a volunteer coordinator, that totals about $270,000, or 275 or so. What would that be, that would be a small percentage, wouldn't it?
Two counselors?
Yeah, two counselors, spread out over the middle schools and have some additional elementary school counselor.
5%?
So, that's, that's 5% personnel. I don't know what the number for Star's discussion on the secondary reading and math curriculum intervention.
Your 5%?
We'd have to come up with a number.
Yeah, there's a number right there. 550,000.
So, is that for how many people?
10%.
But how many people is that?
No, that's just a one-time cost.
Oh, that's a one-time?
Yeah, one-time cost.
Dave, you're thinking of the volunteer coordinator, right?
Yeah, well, not, no, I was thinking of the secondary reading, math curriculum intervention training. Oh, so you weren't talking about this cost, you were talking about the one over here?
Right, this one. But I was, the volunteer, yeah, they're different.
So, I'm, you know, I'm not, I'm not, I'm open to that. I think of that favorably. So, is that a, so, but that's a one-time expense, so that would go up under one-time expenses. So, what percentage would that be in one-time expenses?
So, right now, you've allocated 50%.
Right, so then 10% in the one-time expenses, and then the balance unallocated, which could be utilized towards whatever, a potential shortfall in the population reduction that will occur in funding because of that, and a increased amount of availability for what we may need to close out negotiations. So, that's 10, 5, 45, 40, right?
That's what I got you down for.
Yeah, 10, 5, 45, 40.
Can the unallocated be used for contract negotiations if we get put into that pot?
Unallocated, unallocated.
Right, so it would be, so. And then you said there's 28 elementary schools without counselors?
23. The bulk of them have a .5 counselor. Some of them have, you've got Creating Successful Futures, there's a couple counselors there, but that's a unique program. Generally, .5. And there's two schools, elementary, that have middle school students. Girdwood, which has roughly 45, Northern Lights, that has about 110 at that middle school grade level. And neither of them have counselors, and that's what Member Donnelly has brought up multiple times.
But on an average, it's one counselor per 750 students.
Yes.
And are we going to give anybody on this?
I think.
This is a.
That's just for our information.
Could I just? I don't want you to misunderstand, there's a lot of schools don't have a half a counselor.
23.
Those have half a counselor.
No, they don't, no.
Schools do not have counselor at all.
And then my, before I say, I just didn't know what the special education department chairs, that's their recommendations? That's just on personnel?
This, this is similar to the information that you have right here. So, any kind of testimony would be given during testimony time because I want to know that, that there's lots of other people who gave.
Sure.
I just shared that with the board, you know, because it came totally, so. But that's right within positions that were cut.
Um, so, yeah, so my concern would be getting the secondary reading, math curriculum training. So, that's 10% on one-time expenditures with both of capturing either at the state or assembly level some of those safety, security one-time costs. And then increased personnel, let's see, that's five, 2.5 for 25 teachers. I don't know.
That would go into class size reduction.
I don't know.
We kind of separated teachers into class size reduction, and then personnel is all those other.
You know, and it's, and it's worth taking too long to do the percentages. And not that I know you want that, but.
Just tell us what you, what you want.
So, I like the secondary thing, and then I like, I like having teachers in the classroom.
Okay.
Got it.
Okay.
And then flexibility, right? Because if we're going to have to reduce enrollment potential, I don't want to be caught up.
So, the reading math and.
I like the secondary. This is a nice one. Um, I, I do think we should move in the business meeting tonight to restore the FTE that was cut to like an episode. And I agree, that needs to be done urgently by us so that people can know it's coming and make, make plans. I would like for us to, to look to 90 by 2020 or United Way to see if they would provide a volunteer coordinator. And, and part of that's to save money, but also part of it is that they would automatically be connected to rather significant resources in the community. And it obviously would create kind of a hybrid situation where that person would need to go into our buildings and interact with principals and, and folks kind of like one of our staff people. But I, I just see the potential there for someone that, that would have a direct connection to all the organizations that come under 90 by 2020, but also really have some kind of validity in our schools, not, not just another volunteer walking in, that's somebody who perhaps reports directly to the superintendent or has the kind of access to make sure they get the cooperation that they show. And I, I do think that we should take steps to have some level of counseling to all middle school students at the very least. And for the time being, I would say the, the rest of it should be unallocated pending requests from the administration for what I see as our biggest priorities.
Well, I definitely want to take into account what the principals are saying because I think they have much more of a connection at the building level. So, I, my top priorities are restoring 25 FTEs, that was before I read this. My second priority would have been counselors, but seeing that they feel that it's more needed in special ed, I mean, I'm just so concerned about the counselors we've been losing and seeing the impact on the high schools. I think we need it at the elementary and middle school levels. But if they're saying they have a higher priority, I feel like I need to defer to them because they know more what the students in the buildings need. So, I think I would defer to what their, what their level of prioritization is. But I definitely think we should put probably that 20% aside for contingencies. And I, I do have one question, restore secondary credit recovery. That's what summer school is about, what is that? Are we, did we get rid of secondary?
We just had 200,000 in it, and we're doing it off of 100,000.
We've reduced it by 50%.
So, does that mean?
For next summer.
Does that mean half the kids will have the opportunity next summer to do credit recovery?
We, our goal is to find other ways to get that.
Okay, well, that's a pretty high priority for me also. I think that's really important. And I do agree with what people have said about if there's grants, if there's muni money, if there's other ways that we can address the security issues because obviously those, you know, the number one thing when people send their kids to school, the number one thing is safety, you know, emotional safety, physical safety. Is that enough?
Perfect.
Just a quick, 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 fun question. Were these listed in priority, or were they just listed?
Uh, I think they were, they were just listed. I'm not, I'm, I'd have to go back and ask.
I assume they were in priority, I, but.
I would assume.
I, I'm going to defer to.
Yes, they were in priority.
But a lot of the things that.
No, oh, no, they're not listed in priority, they're just a list, okay?
In that case, I personally, from what I've been hearing in the community, I think that those counselors are critical. So, that would be my second model.
Okay. I think we're ready to move on. Thank you. Um, now, we can just, we want one.
Could I just ask one more question?
Sure.
Okay, Jim?
Jim, Dave has one more question.
You know, one of the principals mentioned the special education department chairs. Is that something that's like, I don't, there's a special word for it, where they get extra funding? Extra, the people who do that function, who are doing extra work, get a little extra money?
They, there's two ways to pay. Some get an addenda, but some also have free periods off where they don't have kids with them. So, it's in lieu of, so I don't have a class assigned to me as a department chair in, in special education, for instance. So, then I, I work with the kids.
Because one of the themes I, I want to put forth, that I support, is when we ask our employees to do extra things, their extra job duties, I, I'm supportive of us negotiating or, or providing some appropriate compensation to them for doing that.
So, just a quick question. Cindy, would you mind coming up for just a minute? And maybe just talk about this issue so that the board has a, a good feeling for, you know, I know that we've cut the department chairs.
And the L L.
Since she has probably not seen the memo, just give her five seconds.
And I don't know, is still here?
You know, if I could just address the board.
Okay.
I would provide, I would rather your guidance be general guidance, like you said, because we've planned and have strategies, and you heard me, Kat. There's a whole different strategy that has to do with an instructional model that they choose to implement to make. So, what we're saying is, let's just go back to how we've always done business by saying, but the, the tutors are now at the elementary level, not the high school level. The high school has teachers.
Right.
And so, by kind of pinpointing and doing this, what will you, what I would prefer you do is say, "You know what, we want teachers, we want counselors." Then what we do is we go back and say, "Okay, where were the needs?" The needs were at middle school, they were here, special ed, where were the needs? And then we provide that, but.
But I don't think the board understands if they're, is, I mean, we're reading this, but do we understand as a board, is there a need or isn't there a need?
Yeah, I don't understand that need.
It's coming from the principal, so I just want to understand it, yeah.
We need to count on her to know these needs and what's going on.
But I don't want to tell her, like, "I want teachers and counselors," and feel, or to feel constrained by that, if this is what her judgment is really, you know what I mean? I don't, I, I want, I want it to be better.
So, it's a board feels we don't need any further exploration, I will excuse Cindy, or if anybody has any questions? Okay?
Well, you could say, Dana, we want you to be sure that special education, ELL, and every, you're at the instructional model of your district is addressed.
Well, and basically, I'm just trying to provide, provide understanding. I'm not trying to direct anything, it's just for understanding purposes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, then we could. We need to see Jim to get that.
Just trying to provide.
Yeah, because I'm trying to understand what they're asking us to do there.
So, at this time, we are going to recognize, I don't have my agenda here, focus on staff and students. This is something we do at the end of every work session because it's important that we recognize our staff and students and our community members, and the focus needs to be on them. And so, this is an opportunity for the board to express our gratitude and our thank yous and all those type of things. And we will get started. Okay, I already said my speech, so I don't have anything else to say. Now, this is our time as a board to focus on staff and students. As a board, we're very, this is important to us to make sure that we express as a board our gratitude to our staff and students and community. And tonight, we have, I'll let Ms. Dr. Bishop begin.
All right. The first focus on staff and students is for our BP Teachers of Excellence. And our BP Teachers of Excellence.
So we wanted to share these folks with everyone as well and honor them here in the district. So we can come out front here so that we can provide those, we're going to take pictures of folks as well. So I'll share a little bit about BP. BP launched Teachers of Excellence 23 years ago, both to recognize the contributions of outstanding Alaska teachers and to reinforce and encourage excellence in education. In addition, the BP Educational Allies Award was added last year to recognize the unsung heroes in schools, our support staff, administrators, or volunteers who are working alongside teachers to inspire students to make a difference in our schools and community. Please join me in recognizing our BP Educational Allies for the Anchorage School District first. Please come forward from Greenay Middle School Safety and Security Specialist Marilyn Galardo. And we're going to have her stay. And also, could Laverne Maynard Lee, please come forward, Alaska State Department for the Deaf. Is Laverne here? She couldn't make it. So I just want to tell the story about how Laverne found out. So we told her that we needed an interpreter at the event. And so because it's a pretty fiscal job, we actually had two interpreters. That's how it works. And while we were reading the award, the other interpreter, we made sure the other interpreter was up and she signed. And the, Laverne was there in the audience just reading her signing and then was like, that's me! So it was fun. It was a great surprise. She thought she was there to work, but we were actually there to honor her. So that was kind of a fun thing, so. But let me tell you about Marilyn. She's known as Ms. G and she has more than 25 years of service with the Anchorage School District. She has a genuine concern for students, but also holds them to the school's expectations of high standards of behavior. In addition to her time spent in the school day, Ms. G is always willing to help with events outside school hours, from late night wrestling meets to basketball and hockey, building camaraderie between opponents. Let me see if I have any more. So congratulations to Ms. G for being a BP ally. And we're going to call everyone up and then I'll take one big picture. Now, please join me in recognizing eight ASD teachers who have been recognized as BP Teachers of Excellence this year. And I'm going to have them all come forward and then I'll just go talk about them all. So here we go. So Leah, please come forward. Leah. Leah Bowden. Leah teaches science and engineering to all four grade levels at Diamond High School. She's been teaching for eight years, all in Alaska, and is an alum of Diamond High. Leah says that her proudest moments occur when she hears from former students about the impact her classes had on their lives. She states, "I shifted careers to teaching to have a positive impact on shaping our future. It is likely the goal of every teacher to change lives, but measuring achievement of that goal is often hard to do." And Leah, would you share your prior career as a lady in STEM, please?
I was a nuclear engineer for the United States Navy.
And we have her here in ASD, teaching our young ones. So congratulations, Leah, BP Teacher of Excellence. And Allison McCary, please come forward. Allison here? Allison might be teaching orchestra at Romi. All right. So I'll read about Allison. She teaches orchestra at Romi and to sixth graders at Turnigan and Rogers Park. She is alum of Anchorage's West High School and before that, the very school where she now teaches Romi. She teaches kids three things. You are part of this group. We will, what we do in this group is special and we have high standards. And lastly, she says, "I believe you can reach these standards." She integrates team building, social-emotional learning, and partner work into her daily lessons. So students build relationships in a safe and welcoming community. And when I talked to, just so you know, Bruce, our Director of Fine Arts, when we talked about Allison, he said, "Oh, Dina, you know, she was a student here," and he goes, "In our music, oh, she's the top 1% of the 1%." So that's pretty high because I worked with Bruce and he always gets on me about different things. He has high standards. So to know that Allison is held in high regards and she's also one of ASD's graduates is a pleasure. So congratulations if you see Allison. And Matthew, Ryan Prinka, please come forward. We never know what to call. Hi, madam. As Ryan, hi there, congratulations. So I met him as Ryan initially. His principal introduced him to me and he introduced himself to me at a robotics event and then somebody else. And I thought, oh, we have two Prinkas in the district. But then when I talked to his principal, he said, "You can call him Matthew, you can call him Ryan, or you can call him Prinka, or you can say it all at the same time." So congratulations. Matthew teaches chemistry, project lead the way engineering, and first tech challenge robotics at Eagle River High School. He has been a teacher for 19 years and 16 of them right here in Alaska. He feels it's important to model proper, successful behavior. With that goal in mind, he's at every, at school every day and hasn't taken a personal sick day in 10 years. He's always prepared with lessons, labs, and activities ready in advance of class. He is available with an open door policy for homework and study and tutoring both before and after school, and he's always looking for a new way to learn. And I want to share that when I visited his classroom, the first thing I did was like, oh, my word, when I went in and I just counted students. And it was an AP something or other class, because you teach quite a few AP classes, and there was over 35 kids in that class. So terrific job and they all loved you. Congratulations. Kelly Puff isn't here because she's moved on. Kelly Puff, let me just share, she worked for King Career Center, but she always wanted, she's moved on to, well, sometimes we don't think it's bigger and better at the university level, but she now works for the university as their culinary instructor for the University of Alaska Anchorage. So she's just moved across the parking lot from King Tech High to the UAA and she's going to lead their, as I said, culinary arts program. So she's still going to be connected to kids, but she feels she'll have a greater influence across the entire state. So we call her Chef Puff. She's known as that to her students and she teaches, again, culinary arts in 11th and 12th grade at KCC. And she's been teaching for 10 years in Alaska. And one of her students asked, when they asked about her being a teacher, it says, "Isn't that what an exceptional teacher is? Someone who encourages and pushes students to be their very best." Chef Puff is clearly exactly that. She pushes people to be their best. And we were sad to see her go, but happy that she's still going to be with the connection between King Tech. They're going to get college credits for culinary arts at the high school now. So she's created that connection and we're real happy to continue to have her as an adjunct with us. So Kelly Puff. And this gentleman just here, please come up, Gerald Ramos.
Ramos.
Ramos. Gerald Ramos. So Mr. Ramos teaches third grade at College Gate Elementary School, but has spent years teaching combination classes, including first, second, second, third, and special education resource K through fourth grade. He has been a teacher for nine years, seven has been in Alaska. He tells us that, we hear the phrase, "Jack of all trades," but for teachers, he says it's "Hats of all trades." Every day in his class, he's a teacher, a parent, a nurse, a friend, a mentor, a counselor, and a bad guy, I doubt that, to my students. Every day is not only learning experience, but also for me. And when I visited Mr. Ramos's class, he wasn't anywhere to be found because his students were over here doing something, he was over here. And then I went back during his prep time and he was continuing to be busy. And I went back to his lunchtime and he was continuing, couldn't be found because he was just busy with kids. And so he definitely, I would say, there's quite a bit of evidence to be that hats of all trades. So congratulations, Mr. Ramos. All right, and Leola Rutherford, please come forward. Mrs. Rutherford teaches fourth and fifth grades at Rogers Park Elementary School. She's been a teacher for four years, all of them in Alaska. She is a fifth generation Alaskan and proud graduate of East Anchorage High School. I think it's more than four years. What is it? Was it just four here? So, yeah, so she's just come back. Yeah, with ASD. Mrs. Rutherford's class is a functioning mini-society. Students govern, run daily class meetings, present targeted mini-lessons, plan field trips, publish a newspaper, collaborate together, and invite guests to enrich the curriculum. And clearly, what students are discovering in your class is a love of learning and a sense of wonder of our world. And I do want to say that when I visited her class, I visit several classes and when you always ask, "What does a superintendent do?" Sometimes even high school kids don't know. And her kids, like, listed off, literally my job description. And I was like, wow! They do know the community and what people do. And they were so impressive in talking to them and just wrote me a nice thank you letter. So what a delight in your class and your students were very respectful and you could tell they hold her in high regard. Congratulations. And Lem Willis, please come forward. This is Lem and he teaches social studies to all four grade levels at AJ Diamond High School. He's been a teacher for 14 years, all in Alaska, and he is also, like Leah, a Diamond alum. He believes his mission as an educator is to empower young people to reach their maximum potential by engaging in their community as leaders, scholars, and citizens. Lem requires his students complete, to complete a citizen action project in which they apply what they have learned in the classroom by participating in public meetings, attending court proceedings, registering to vote, participating in political campaigns, and interacting with elected officials. One of the students wrote, "The greatest way Mr. Willis makes a difference in the community is by ensuring that every student who enters his classroom comes out more educated, aware, and ready to take on the world." Congratulations, Lem. When I actually went to Diamond, I walked right in and met his principal, I don't know, oh, there she is, Tina, and I, and I was like, "Oh, I'm here to talk about your BP teachers." And she was just like, like this, because Lem was active in the commons area with a bunch of kids at the school, leading probably students, something with student government or something. And so he was right there, so I was almost a big mouth and ruined it. But he, he was right there, obviously active, not just with the students in his own class, but the students in the entire school. And a little tidbit, he actually went to school with Leah as well. And this is totally random because there's over 500 ASD teachers that are nominated and apply and finish and they just were top-notch. And it was funny that if you think that this is just pre-selected and how could two people be at Diamond is because they're two absolutely fantastic secondary teachers. And now, please join me in congratulating the 2018 Anchorage School District BP Teacher of the Year, Mr. Chris Hedrickson, please come forward. When he went to the BP evening, I believe it was a day for him and his wife. We had nice adult libations and food. And I noticed that the little ones are here today, so let's give them a way back there. They can just see that. Yeah, there he goes. Chris teaches first and second grades at Chinook Elementary School and he's been teaching for eight years. He's one of the state's leaders in social-emotional learning and has served on the Council of Distinguished Educators for Commission in Washington DC, one of six teachers in the entire nation. Chris says, "I believe in serving the whole child. This means I view my job to be more than teaching my students academics. I take an interest in the things that excite them both in and out of the classroom." Thank you again and congratulations to all of our BP teacher winners as well as our top Alaskan women BP teacher from ASD, Chris. You are what make ASD great. Congratulations. And if you'd like to say anything special, part of this, I always, when kids are here, just so you know, I always put the mic and say, "Tell adults something." And now, as our distinguished educators, would you like to share any wisdom that you love with anyone?
Board, let's keep the focus on SEL throughout the next couple of years. Keep the funding covered. And I will just say, the focus has to be on what's best for our students. And I loved hearing that, sitting in a meeting, and I see at least one of my former students sitting out there. I think he came to a school board meeting for a project for my class once. Here he is again, so there you go.
I just want to give a shout out to the parents and the students because without them, what would our job be?
I totally agree. And also seeing a lot of my colleagues here who are retiring, it's really sad that they're retiring this year, but I'm glad that they're moving on to new ventures. And I hope I do see that they've been doing for almost 25, 30 years, so. Thank you, Jerry and Denise.
I would say, let's keep amplifying the good things that are going on in ASD. So much of the news, so much of the media is negative. There's a lot of good things and a lot of good people that work for this district, so let's amplify the good.
A lot of what I've seen is the ability to interact with really awesome kids and change what we do in the classroom every day to meet their needs. And I just hope that especially with what I'm seeing at the elementary school level and knowing some awesome teachers and how they've impacted my kids, that we still have the freedom to not just mandate time and seats and what they have to do, but let teachers do their jobs and teach kids because we know, like what Chris says, that relationships are what make it happen and make the education work.
Oh, that was pretty good. I have to say, I actually love working with kids. It's a blessing for me to be able to see them in the public eye and they're like, "No, Marilyn, I should have listened." And I go, "It's never too late." It's like, you're my future, I got to take care of all of our future, but it's a blessing being able to see them in the public and when they turn into adults and seeing them, now I get to give you a hard time because you guys are just kidding. It's a blast and I love it, so thanks.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, our next section is to honor our teachers in ASD who are coming back this evening, who have dedicated 25 years or more to the Anchorage School District. Your years of service and commitment to our students is so valued and appreciated. As I call your name, if you could please come forward and I will just share the last place that we have as your title, but you can also be thinking you'll have an opportunity at the end to share any words of wisdom. We had quite a few retirees, but we want to share the names of those that are here. And if I didn't get the RSVP in time on my paper, please be sure to just come up. With that, please come forward. From College Gate Elementary School, Denise Carey. She teaches as a teacher of K-6. And 32 years of service. And she began in our district in 1986, so congratulations. Valerie Eckberg Brown from Chugiak High School. She's a teacher of 9 through 12. And Valerie, I think, was instrumental in the work at Chugiak and High School this year, as well as many, because she has 29 years of service and she started with us in 1989. Congratulations. From West High School, a ninth through 12th grade teacher, Gail Haywood. 27 years of service. And with 25 years of service, one of our STEM teachers, starting with us in 1993, is it Mary Hoppus. Is Mary here? And we do have Carol Johansson. And I don't, if Carol could come up here and Carol, share your years. You have 25 years of service?
30.
30 years of service. And Carol, where are you? Mears Middle School with 30. You must have started when you were tech. Absolutely. So, and I hear that retirement makes you look even younger, so you're gonna... Really fabulous. Okay, so Senior High Building Plant Operator from Eagle River High School, 42 years of service in ASD, started with us in 1976, Richard Latner. Obviously, you didn't do all at Eagle River High School, but what are some places you were around the district?
I was at Burkhild Elementary School for 25 years. I was at Green Mill School for 10 years and at Eagle River High School for three. But before that, I worked for the Operations Department as a carpet cleaner and as a lead custodian at Turner Elementary School for one year. So, school district was good to me.
Congratulations. And I would like to point out that most folks don't move up to high school. They like to get out of high school. And you went from elementary, middle, and high, you love our babies. Congratulations, that's great. From Campbellstiff Elementary, Julia McClure, 27 years of service. And Julia started with us in 1991. From maintenance, a supervisor in maintenance for 30 years. Started with us in 1988, Terry, is it Sineese? Sineese. Congratulations, Terry. There's lots of consonants in that name and not very many vowels. And, starting with us in 1993, a mid-level teacher, please come forward, from Central Middle School, Thomas Sofer, 25 years. With 31 years of service in ASD, from College Gate Elementary, Gerald Tennyson. Started with us in 1987. And he even got a shout-out from Mr. Ramos there. Starting with us in 1985, providing 33 years of service from King Career Center, Michelle Whaley. And while she finished up a career at King Career, and I know you were at lots of places teaching French or Russian, Russian language, I knew you were Russian. And won an award this year as a honoring...
Secondary.
Secondary language is correct. So congratulations on that as well. Serving 29 years, starting in 1989, we have a STEM teacher from CNI, Penelope Williams. So we'll have to celebrate her curriculum instruction. And a teacher from South High with 43 years of service, Glenn Wright. Are you in the room? Congratulations, Glenn.
Thank you very much.
You are, tough guy, yeah. So Glenn, how many graduations? 43 graduations you went through. Congratulations, yeah. Is anyone else here that has the, that, we sent out an invitation that I didn't get on my list. We'd certainly love you to come up. Is Robyn Tozer here? Robyn Tozer! So Robyn has 26 years of service. And where were those services?
17 years at Stanley Parks Elementary and nine years at Vega Middle.
Wonderful. So congratulations and I am just gonna pass the mic and if you are so inspired to share with family, friends, as well as many educators in the audience, good words because certainly we need to listen because you are who make ASD great. I would love to echo what was said earlier, but I also want to add to all of our teachers that we need to keep involved, we need to keep supporting our colleagues and supporting our students even in retirement.
Thank you, it's been a good, it's been a great run.
I'll bid on that one, it has been a great run and I'm gonna enjoy retirement.
And it's true that without the students, we wouldn't be here. So I'm glad that I was able to be a part of many lives.
And despite all the negative talk out there, I just want all of you that are educators and administrators to know that what you do really does matter.
It's because many of us up here are Anchorage School District graduates. It's from, and I actually graduated from East Time together along with Leola. So our teachers made a difference. I went to Anchorage School District from College Gate on to East Time. So please keep influencing those girls, yeah.
I too was an East Time graduate.
Anyway, I wanted to be a teacher since I was in 3rd grade and I thoroughly enjoyed my career and I hope I touched a lot of lives, I enjoyed everything.
I also really enjoyed my career. I taught Russian for years. I was at Chugiak for the 29 years and was really happy to do that. I did touch a lot of lives and it's fun to see the kids back and see them and what they have become. It's also really fun to see my high school teacher. For honors English and pushing me that direction because I also brought a big for school district and have a good elementary mentor all the way up to service high school. So it's really fun to see the crowd. And also our colleagues, I can't say enough about what Michelle Whaley said down here about, "Support your colleagues because it really does help, helps on hard days and helps on good days. It's fun to smile with them too."
Did all that. Just, it's been a great ride, I've loved every moment of it. Love that my family came to see me and lots of friends out there. Thank you so much, it's been wonderful.
I too am a graduate of Anchorage School District, gave a very big part of it. So I've been seeing my time through here. It's really been really fun with everybody. The relationships, like one of the teachers said, starting little relationships make it all happen. So communications, everything, thanks for everything you've done for us. I wasn't born and raised here, but I got here as quick as I could. And this spring, I had quite a surprise when I went in to introduce myself to a lady who could be my substitute teacher. And she said, "Oh, I know all about you." I said, "You do?" And she said, "Yes, I was in your 6th grade math class." And so it came full cycle. And the students that I teach realized the next day that they didn't have any slack because she knew how I taught. We do important work and in retirement, I expect I'll continue working in this field somewhat. I hope others will and get the next generation of teachers as far along as we can. Thank you.
I feel very privileged to be part of the Anchorage School District for 43 years and my own children went through the Anchorage School District and they got a first-rate education. So I hope that we can continue to offer that to the kids that are coming up and the next generations. Thank you very much.
Let's throw you the crap. We're gonna try to...
Oh, okay, go outside. But all just make, you can just pop in, make a couple rows. And if you can see Leah, I can see you.
Thank you so much. Okay, we do have one last award and I'll do it very quickly. Would Kathy Moffett please come forward? I am not sure that Kathy knew this, but she has been named as the 2017-18 ACT College and Career Readiness Champion. She was nominated by this through the ACT College and Career Readiness Program, Preparing Individuals for College Career Sex Six... Career Success. I have to thank teachers. I need to thank my teachers for having my lisp go away. Honestly, I did have trouble with my S's when I was small. So her career success is no small task and it's never been more important. That is why ACT is recognizing individuals who are making a positive impact on their communities through their efforts to advance college and career readiness. She is the administrative liaison for the Alaska Middle College and has worked tirelessly to build the program to what it is today, expanding opportunities for students. It's the first public high school to which students are simultaneously enrolled in both high school and college courses at UAA and the faculty from UAA and Chugiak, Eagle River, on the Chugiak-Eagle River campus, rather, but is now going to expand to the main campus. It moved to ASD in 2017 and students are able to graduate from high school earning college credits and some graduating with an entire associate's degree. Overseeing both programs, Kathy Moffett was the administrative liaison when the Alaska State Legislature was approached for support, opening the dual enrollment school in 2012. She has continued in the oversight leadership role and has transitioned has completed for the program's continuation for fall of 2017. And thank you for your dedicated and exceptional work. You make ASD great. And so ACT will also give you an award, but before the end of the year, we wanted to give you a board award. So congratulations. And I know the principal is here, is, there he is, a principal of the campus in the Eagle River is Marty Lang. So he helps run that and I believe we had about 150 students this year moving on. We just look to offer opportunities for kids, let them have a place in their high school as well as a place in university. So, alright. And ladies and gentlemen, please join us for a reception now of cake and juice and celebrate your wonderful success. Thank you for making ASD great.
We have to move into expect your session.
Okay.
Thank you. Yeah, so go ahead. We're gonna continue to work, but you can have cake.
I move, the board move in exactly the same way.
I'll second it, whatever he said.
Hi, how are you? You brought it back?
It was good though, I enjoyed the way that he wrote it.
Oh, good, yeah, it was kind of like, you know, it just happened.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'm pretty shy.